I would like to first ask everyone to stand and join in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, could you please do roll call?
Craig Koshal.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Terry Ruffo and Cam Presley. Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Sirk.
There.
Okay. Was everyone given a chance to read the minutes from their last meeting that was May 16th?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to accept them as email.
Second. Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Close same sign. Okay. Well, we have to wait till seven for a public hearing, so Jamie, here she is. Do you have some event applications?
Yeah, Jamie, you want to go first?
Okay. How you doing Nate?
Good, how are you?
Good.
An event application for June 30th, the Homestead fireworks show, just for the residents of Homestead and then the other friends and family that come visit. And in the renewal process for my insurance, it'll be $2 million general and then $2 million for aggregate, and that gets approved on the 10th, so I'll get the C O I on probably the 14th for that.
Okay.
And then I'll just email that into Phyllis.
So, this is basically the same as last year?
Yep, just closing the Stone Street in the middle.
Can you pray for some rain before that, before then?
It's all right, nothing people that are already coming.
Okay. So, you've, uh, it looks like all the department heads have already... Uh, there it goes.
I got Kristen and Mitchell's signature, because Jeff's downtown. Jeremy's signature as well.
Yeah, just need mine's signature in the back. Oh. Guess I need approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the event application for June 30th at Homestead, for Homestead fireworks. I'll second.
Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. Okay. So, I forget this, Biden is, am I, Biden's signature?
Yeah, Biden, um, you would sign it, and then it's, um...
Is it here?
Biden, Mayor, and then there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. These about two.
So, this was the winning design, uh, for the crosswalk.
All right, so I have to do the application, but first, what I just handed out, um, Main Street has been working on having a crosswalk mural between, uh, on Second Street, which will be by, um, the pizza, Famous Monster pizzas and Sherwin-Williams, and that is actually going to get painted on downtown Decatur Day while Second Street's already shut down. So, this is what has been selected, and the artist is Shelby Nowitzki. So, I just wanted you guys to see that and...
I think you guys approved this program like last year.
Yeah, a while back. It's just taken a while to get to this point.
How long is it supposed to last?
So, it'll last, it will set up to five years, five to 10 years.
Is it a secret?
No.
So, our audience?
Yes, I don't have another copy. I gave you guys everything, but that is what will happen, and it's Saturday, June 17th, for the signing it, while the street hardly closed, and it should be done that day.
Yep. The Koi Pond?
Uh-huh. Okay, so then, event applications, um, Two Brothers has turned in an application uh, for their 75th birthday bash, and it'll be in the bash parking lot at Two Brothers. They also are going to close Third Street, just from the parking lot entrance to Monroe Street, um, and that's from 12 to 10, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. They're going to have QB Ashcraft from 6:00 to 8:00 that night. Their actual event is from 5:00 to 10:00, so everything would be set up. But they will have the alley open, and then in between the parking lots will be open too. The cars will still be able to get through. And that is on August 1st.
Okay. Are they having, they're having the park, I know they're having the street closed from, like in front of VFW and towards Monroe Street?
Parking lot is also closed. They're right behind them.
Okay.
That first section of the parking lot is going to be closed, because they're going to have a band outside.
Okay. Do they, if they're closing the parking lot, do they have plans for parking? I mean, have they worked with like the St. Mary's Church?
I, uh, I don't know.
I guess that's just my question.
So, they did this a couple of years ago, too. So, she said they're going to do the same thing.
Okay.
I don't know what that plan is for them.
Okay.
It says August 10th?
August 1st.
1st?
Yeah.
So, how do they, does that use the parking lot? They go back the alley towards the courthouse? That's it? Well, you could go, I guess, through VFW and St. Mary's.
Parking lot.
To the alley there.
Job there.
August 1st.
So, the band is from 6:00 to 8:00 that night, and then they're going to have some other activities.
Oh, is that for Tuesday night, too, or something in it?
We have council that night.
And the band's 6:00 to 8:00?
Yeah. Yeah, 6:00 to 8:00 will be the band, and then, like I said, they're still working on having more entertainment. So, that's the first one. Do we need...
Approval. Motion to accept the, uh, event application.
I'll second.
Motion is second on paper?
Aye.
Close same sign.
Okay, and then, the next one is for Adams Memorial, their 100th anniversary, and it is going to be, uh, the Philharmonic concert on Madison Street Plaza. So, that's going to take place on Monday, July 3rd. Um, the event is from 6:00 to 9:00. The Philharmonic will perform from 7:30 until 9:00. Um, but they're going to have, like, Rupert Close, and Andy Scone, and different food vendors will be there. Um, and it's going to be set up like a concert. The First Street will be closed, um, and that'll be, it, I have all of their insurance information and everything signed for that.
One comment, whether concert-wise, whether it's you or Craig, is, uh, good problems. More people equals more trash. It's like overflowing trash cans. So, might just need more.
Okay.
From whomever. And I reminded our police to ask that people not bring their dogs to the concerts. There's signs up, but...
Yeah.
There were five or six people with dogs, one giant dog. She let go of the leash, it's running around. Really don't want that.
Does it say how big the orchestra is?
Fifty.
Fifty?
Yeah, I met with, uh, the people that were going to come and perform.
That's big.
Fort Wayne's great. Philharmonic, it's going to be cool. I would assume it's going to be the, uh...
It's patriotic pop?
Yeah, I would assume that. Talked with them about the sound and everything else, and they're all...
I got a flyer in the mail to make a donation.
Did you? Okay. I would make a motion to accept the, uh, event application for Adams Memorial.
I'll second.
All right, that's all I have.
Motion is second on paper?
Aye.
Close same sign. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
I could probably introduce the non-reverting fund ordinance.
Yeah, let's see, yep. So, I had asked, um, Phyllis and Anne to work with me on a non-reverting fund for the Mayor's Youth Council. Um, I have some business owners stepping up already wanting to donate to that type fund, so this is great. Um, I definitely, Craig and I met with a group of them last week, and they definitely, they love the idea of what's going on with this Mayor's Youth Council. Um, they just need a fund to do some projects. Uh, we need to get this office set up for them, so we need some furniture and a desk and a computer, and, uh, so we're going to get moving on that, so I just need to get this non-reverting fund set up for the Mayor's Youth Council. So, we need an ordinance.
All right. So, the mayor described this as a non-reverting fund that would be used to, um, facilitate the growth, development, maintenance, and use for the Mayor's Youth Council. Um, and it would be a pretty broad, uh, used fairly broadly for their purposes, um, and to be able to accept donations from community sources, um, as well as other revenues, such as, um, any that are regularly budgeted, and then common council would approve any donations from that fund. So, this would be ordinance number 2023-8.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2023-8 on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second on paper?
Aye.
Close same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-8, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes a Mayor's Youth Council Non-Reverting Fund, which authorizes donations and other revenues to be deposited into said fund for the development, maintenance, and purposes of the Mayor's Youth Council.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-8 on its first reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sirk.
Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance 2023-8 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second on...
Aye.
Close same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-8, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes a Mayor's Youth Council Non-Reverting Fund, which authorizes donations and other revenues to be deposited into said fund for the development, maintenance, and purposes of the Mayor's Youth Council.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-8 on its second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sirk.
Yes.
Is there a reason to suspend the rules, or do we, um, what's the urgency on this?
Um, just to be allowed to take donations. I mean, if we go another meeting, we can, but...
Suspend the rules?
I think we should, let's get moving on it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2023-8 on its third reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second on paper?
Aye.
Close same sign.
Ordinance 2023-8, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes a Mayor's Youth Council Non-Reverting Fund, which authorizes donations and other revenues to be deposited into said fund for the development, maintenance, and purposes of the Mayor's Youth Council.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-8 on its third reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sirk.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Victoria, thanks you.
You're welcome, Victoria.
We can, uh, we need to go to the public hearing, so we can, somebody needs to suspend the council meeting.
And maintain a motion to suspend?
Make a motion to suspend the council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion is second on paper?
Aye.
Close same sign.
Motion to open up a public hearing?
I'll second.
Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. Okay, Anne, I will let you take over.
All right. The purpose of this public hearing is for discussion on the application for tax abatements that were filed for IO Properties, IO Enterprises LLC, which is for a personal property, um, tax deduction, or based on, um, equipment purchases. And the other application that is a part of this public hearing is for the tax deduction for IO Properties LLC and improvements to real estate. So, council on May 16th had approved, um, a declaratory resolution for both the personal property and the real property, um, for a 10-year deduction of taxes on each, and that is based on improvements to real estate totaling approximately $6,646,900 on the real estate and, um, equipment of $9,360,000. And on the application, an SB1, it was estimated that, um, these improvements would allow for new employment of at least 100 individuals in the area, so... At this time, we would hear statements from the public in favor of the real estate and equipment tax deductions. If anyone would like to speak in favor, I'd have you come up to the table, um, identify yourself by name and address, and you'll have upwards of two minutes to, um, state your basis. And then, as we go through the public in favor, then we would also have opportunities for those to speak out against, um, the granting of, of the deduction. So, if anyone would like to speak in favor, I'll have you come up to the table.
Good evening, my name's Dan McKinnon, I live in Adams County. I'm in favor of this project, with one big reason is, I'm a corn farmer and caddied a lot of corn, and also, it's a pretty big opportunity for Adams County and the surrounding counties, when you really think about it. Uh, it's going to pull in a lot more with it as it gets up and moving, so there's no doubt that it's a positive, and, uh, I just don't see the negative side of it here, that, that giving a tax abatement's going to anybody, because you're not going to pile your snow or do whatever, you're not going to have money to do that, so I'm all for it. Any questions?
Nope, thanks, Dan.
Hi, my name's Melissa Hammerick, 903 North 10th Street, here in Decatur. Um, I am for this as well. Um, I feel like this is a great opportunity for Decatur, bringing in more jobs, a new industry. Um, the company runs a business in Coolwater, Ohio, and it seems like they have that under control just fine, so I don't see any problems with it here.
Thank you.
Barb. Barb Affler, 278 West 400 North, Decatur. Um, speaking specifically to the tax abatement itself, as a business owner who's been awarded tax abatement from the city council, I can say definitely an economic help for any businesses trying to get started to have that opportunity to defer those taxes and not have to pay as much. You still pay taxes, um, it just gives you the opportunity to pay a little bit less when you're getting started, um, just to kind of help, I mean, it's a huge investment monetarily when you're talking about $15 million, and that doesn't even include what they've already paid for the structures themselves. That's just the improvement that they're going to make. In addition to that, I guess my only other comment about the tax abatement is, assuming that they've met all of the legal requirements to be eligible for the tax abatement, I don't know how you could not give it to them. Um, you know, but the time for the tax abatement is now, when they're in the process of purchasing the equipment and making the improvements, not five years from now, when they prove themselves to everybody. Um, so that's, that's how a tax abatement works. So, I don't know as a council how you could deny them a tax abatement assuming that they've met all of the necessary requirements to be eligible for the tax abatement in the first place. So, that would be, unless you have questions.
Oh, thanks, Barb.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak in favor of the granting of an abatement? Seeing none, we'll move on to, um, anyone who would like to address council speaking in opposition of the granting of an abatement?
Hi, Mary Montgomery Byer, 622 Madison Street. I'm neither for or against the tax, tax abatement. They're here now in Decatur. I'm asking on behalf of the residents that live in that area, that they fulfill their promises that they made when they said, and came in and changed their ordinance to, to allow them into our community, to put up their barriers that they promised, and to make sure that it's not going to sink, have it be a year from now, after next morrow, May in July, and then create permanent tax abatement. I think it's good for the community, they're here, they're going to be our neighbors, but at the same time, to get, at least make sure they're doing what they said they're going to do for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, um, wishing to speak to council in opposition of the granting of an abatement? All right. Uh, seeing none, we'll close that portion.
I'll make a motion to close the, uh, public hearing.
Second. Motion is second on paper?
Aye.
Close same sign.
A motion to reopen the council meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. Okay. Should I make a matter of record now about the, um, advertisement? The proof of filing? I heard that we do that after. So, we need to make a matter, uh, matter of record, the publication of the public hearing and the proof of filing notice.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Close same sign. Okay. Scott. Scott.
If there's... I was going to say if...
Further discussion?
There's any further discussion by council or...
Or do we have questions of, um, IO Properties or, uh, Sound Development? Director Colton Bickle? Do you guys have anything else to say, or...
Um, I just wondered, if you don't mind, did you want to say something, Colton? Okay. Uh, I, all I wanted to do is bring it to everybody's attention that it, this is a layered, uh, okay, year one, it's 100%, year two, it's 90%, and goes on down to 10 over a 10-year period, so they're not, it's not like they're, they're going to miss the taxes on the first year. We also have to remember, they can't apply for this after they've purchased the equipment and it's been installed. Understand that? We can't wait a year, uh, because then they wouldn't, they wouldn't apply, they wouldn't apply to this application. So, I think that we all have to be educated enough in that to understand that there's a reason that this is, the timing is so important on this. Um, as I also wanted to remind everyone that, uh, May 16th at our, um, you know, every year, these abatements come due, uh, on a timed schedule, once annually, and if they don't perform, uh, to their expectations, uh, and, and the council doesn't see, deem them worthy, it can be adjusted at that time or, or changed. I'm not saying that, you know, that last, the last council meeting, we had four of these come up in front of us, and all were approved because of COVID, and, and, and none of them had met their, their employees or their goals. The payroll had increased, but I just, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. You know, we've been through some tough times, but timing is of the essence for this, and i- if they don't get it now, they won't, they won't receive it. So, just wanted to bring your, bring that to your attention, and they will be paying taxes over the next 10 years.
In the, to Craig's point, the abatements and tax deductions are based on the improvements, so any existing personal property that's maintained, that would be taxable, is still being taxed. So, these deductions flow to the improvements, and the same goes with the real property. Um, their basis and what they, their purchase price is, is still taxed, so it's a deduction on, on the improvements to the real property.
Yeah. Good point.
I do understand your concern, but, uh, the process, uh, we follow is with business, and it's all the same, and if you're not negligent or malicious, or we work with you, and, and it has been the same with all businesses. So, just wanted you to also understand that, not whether we like it or not like it, it's a process.
So, economic development proposes projects or filling existing voids in a community or, or buildings that are available for growth. He presented a project, it's moved forward, it's now council's job to, to do our part in helping businesses grow. We are a community that wants to grow, we are pro-business as a council, we've proven to be, but now ultimately, it's really up to those businesses, be it Barb that just mentioned her process, or the four that were before us, uh, a month ago, or this new business to produce, work out your end of the deal. So, with that, I think, um, unless there's any other questions or discussions, process is to move to adopt, or where we at again?
Yeah, I have two confirming resolutions for, um, council to consider. The first would be in relation to IO Properties LLC regarding improvements to the real property or to the real estate. Um, the resolution identifies their location at 400 Chamber Road, Decatur, Indiana, that based on council's, um, approval of the declaratory resolution, that, that address has been designated as existing within an economic revitalization area. Um, again, restating the declaratory resolution and proposing a 10-year deduction of taxes on the state. And as, um, Craig Koshal mentioned, it is a prorated scale that goes from 100% to 10, down to 10% deduction in year 10. It is subject to annual review, and that, um, IO Properties has met the statutory requirements, um, related to the application, the process, their SB1, that they, um, are making the investment of $6,646,900 in improvements, and that they anticipate employment of over 100 people, and that those salaries and wages are able to be paid based on the deduction and the improvements to the real estate. So, and that the benefits resulting from the rehab of public utility and would be to the benefit and welfare of, of all the citizens and taxpayers of Decatur. So, um, that would be in regarding to the real estate, and I believe that that's resolution 2023-10.
That's what I would have, Tim. Okay. Then I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2023-10 by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second on paper?
Aye.
Close same sign.
Resolution 2023-10, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur confirming the establishment of an economic revitalization area upon the application of IO Properties LLC real estate.
Make a motion to pass resolution 2023-10.
Second.
Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign.
So, that was for the property, you see, that was for the real estate.
The next resolution for council's consideration is a confirming resolution related to IO Enterprises LLC, um, tax deductions for personal property or equipment, and, um, very similar to the real property. This deduction relies on council's declaratory resolution passed on May 16th in resolution 2023-9, where the improvements to equipment, um, are located at 400 Chamber Road. The anticipated deductions would be for over a 10-year period of time and a graduated scale from 100% down to 10% in year 10. That appropriate public notice was given, a public hearing was held tonight, or it's my state, um, and that the deduction is approved based on their investment of $9,360,000 in new... new equipment that would bring in more than 100 jobs, that those salaries and wages would be paid in large part based on the use of that new equipment and that their deduction would, would be justifiable based on the benefit of public utility and the benefit and welfare of all the citizens and taxpayers of the city. So.
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2023-11 by short title only.
Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Resolution 2023-11, a resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur confirming the establishment of an economic revitalization area upon application of IO Enterprises LLC for equipment.
Make a motion to pass resolution 2023-11.
Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
And again, to you folks, thank you for your investment in our community. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. We have another public hearing, but not until 7:30.
Thank you.
Jeremy, you want to, yeah, a couple things. You want to talk about Cross Creek subdivision, about lowering the speed limit?
Last several years, we've had some concerns, actually several, speed limit in the Cross Creek subdivision, in actual Cross Creek, in Meadows, in Cross Creek subdivision. We've watched it over the last few years, witnessed some air misses, there's a lot of car traffic, shelters, and also the motorway public. We're going to be out there, you know, a lot of payment workings identifying the cross laws and such. I really do feel that lowering the speed limit from 30 to 25 would be beneficial in this subdivision.
And we've done that in a number of neighborhoods already, right?
Just about all the subdivisions have been lowered to either 20 or 25. By state statute, we can take it to 25 without a traffic study. That's what I would recommend at this point. It's just as simple as adding change in ordinance, taking it out of the 30 section, putting it into 25 and change the size. So just recommendation.
And did you have discussed this with some of the association board members, right?
The actual request came from the board members.
Jeremy, if I could ask you and maybe a couple others in the back to set up some more chairs?
Yeah.
We've got quite a few showing up here.
Do we want to...
I mean, you can authorize me to amend the traffic ordinance or the traffic schedule and reduce it.
Because it's summertime and I think it's a time of, it's time to go. I would make a motion that we, we have and draft an ordinance that we reduce the speed limit at Cross Creek and Meadows and the surrounding Mid-Golf community from 30 miles per hour to 25 for the safety and well-being of all.
I'll second. Motion second, any more discussion on that? On favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Okay, thanks. Do you think, would it be Craig for the association to come up with some decorative speed limit signs or something, just to put at the entrances?
You want me to have him design them?
I don't know. I'm not sure that you can do decorative ones, I think they're...
Mine does not mean enforceable.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, still short. Jeremy, do you want to talk about, real quick, I guess we still have a few minutes for the public hearing. You were right off me and I brought up asking to use some of the ARPA funds for, to finish some of our park projects. Right now, we have obviously a project at the Riverside Center that the county has joined with us and is helping. That project's ongoing right now. We started our crowdsourced funding for the Kikianga project, which is men's and kids' softball fields, a dog park, and stalking that pond. And then we have to finish a little bit at the pickleball courts at Rev complex, there's some fencing that needs to be done yet. And then one other thing I wanted to add is I've had my first, and tomorrow's the second meeting with some of the local skateboarders in town. We're trying to get them off of the stuff we don't want them on and put them on the equipment that they should be skateboarding on. It's a good group of kids and I think they just would like to know that people care and they need a place that they can ride and do some things. So that's going to be another thing I'm going to ask. Kurt Woody and I had a meet with these guys last week and I think Brad might have been here too. They just meet, I think, we need to realize that what they have down there is just insufficient and it's something we need to look at. So I don't have the number amounts right now, until we get through this fundraiser for the Kikianga project, we won't know exactly what we need there yet. But it'd be nice to button up all those projects this summer, for sure. A lot of those things have amenities for kids to enjoy. So I went out yesterday to that pond and there was five people fishing around that pond and just not catching a whole lot, so hoping to fix that problem in the next couple of years. So Jeremy, what are you ahead of that?
Yeah, a lot of these projects are really, really close. They're $5,000 items, $15,000 items. They're the quality of life. It's been projects that's been talked about for four, five, six, seven years. You know, we've got them started, we've got them to, to a, to a place. We just need some cash to finish up. Now's prime time to get them finished up. It's only first of June. Some of these can be finished in two days or three days. I just, I need your help to put finish in touches and to get us caught up. You know, we're all around the city this summer, doing a lot of painting, doing a lot of sprucing up and fixing up, this is just going to be another, these four, five or six projects, it'd be really, really nice to get them.
How much cash are you asking for?
It really depends on where we end up with the Kikianga project. I mean, that's because the, the netting and everything, the poles and lights for the, for the softball is, it's rather expensive, but they, but they need a place to play. You know, they were, their field was taken away and they were told they were going to be given a place of equal value that they had and they've never been given that. They don't have lights, they don't have a good field. So we need to make sure that that happens. And I know they've been out there working to raise funds right now, trying to help themselves, so I don't really have a number until we get through this. We're in the middle of a, actually just started, today?
Yeah.
So we're doing another paternity project, I saw it was on Wayne 15's website, to help raise money for the project. I would guess we're going to be around $100,000. Now, these are ARPA funds, they're not budgeted funds, so we have it there. And I think it's a, a lot of these are perfect use for these funds.
Where are we, or where is the park board in regards to light to Rev Park?
We're working on it. I don't have anything to announce.
Okay.
But we are working on it.
Okay.
To dial in your question a little bit closer, we're probably in that $30,000 to $45,000 range, but I don't figure in anything for the, for the maintenance for Kikianga. Just for the little bit of paint and stuff we're going to need to complete Riverside projects, we can't go any further out of Riverside until we get some money set aside, so the paint, the concrete. You know, you have to be careful what you do with Kikianga and, and the old part because that's more geared with paternity. You can start putting money towards it. So the paternity is basically your last $10, but you got to be careful what you do.
Right. The other thing is the, the group of skateboarders I met with two weeks ago, I gave them some homework to bring back for tomorrow, so hopefully they come back with, Kurt drew up a design of the, of the park down there. They're going to bring back some equipment that they need. Obviously, I'm not a skateboarder, so I don't want to be picking up for them. So they're going to come back with a bunch of ideas and we're going to look at pricing and hopefully here in the next month or so, we'll have a better idea of what...
Down there by the pool?
Yeah, I, I, that was the first thing I asked them, do they not like the location? And they said, no, it's a great location, it's just trash. That's the answer I got from them. I just want to get them off the benches and things downtown. And again, they're good kids, they just need a place to play.
They're all very good projects, like I said, we just need to get to an even keel wherever they're walking up.
Yep. So we'll know more here soon, just wanted to kind of give an update on that.
You have about all the quotes, so it's pretty quick to...
Right.
And we can get you the numbers around the flame leaving here.
And we could probably, we could probably, because we have to allocate, if we're going out of ARPA funds, then we have to appropriate that money for certain things. So we could do one appropriation and finish all of them but Kikianga and then, and then do it again in a, in a couple of months when that whole, the fundraiser, the campaign's over.
If you guys want to, that one can.
That way we can get these all buttoned up soon here.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Don't hesitate.
You would have a duration of the summer instead of...
Right.
Trying to sneak it in in August, whatever. Campaign's over.
All right, we'll sharpen our pencils for the next meeting and have some better numbers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jeremy.
Okay. We are close, can we...
I record the publication?
So moved. So...
This would be a matter of record, the publication for the public hearing on the annexation of Lake Shores Edition Phase 9.
Right. So we have a motion to second?
On favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Okay. Just about there.
Yeah, Scott, second.
I have 7:28, so just wait a couple of minutes to open the public hearing.
I'm making a motion at 7:30.
I guess we can suspend the council meeting. If you want to make that motion.
I'll make a motion that we suspend council meeting.
Second. Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Clayton, if you want to come on up on behalf, I'm assuming you're here on behalf of...
Yes, I'm here on behalf of our clients. Wait a minute. Petition for voluntary annexation of Dorothy Driver Revocable Living Trust.
We'll go into our public hearing in just a second, you'll probably have you restate that, but I just wanted to get you...
I'm kind of between meetings right now, so 7:20.
I'm looking at the TV, seems like good, I'll make a motion. We got three attorneys in the room, we got to make sure we follow all the rules.
I'll make a motion that we open up the public hearing.
Second. Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Okay, again.
Okay. So the purpose of this public hearing is to allow for public comment either in favor or in opposition of a verified petition for the annexation of an area located in Adams County that is adjacent to the existing Lake Shores Edition and present tonight on behalf of the beneficiaries of the Dorothy, oh my goodness, Dorothy J. Dryer Revocable Living Trust, it's Clayton Lindrick. So I'll let you kind of describe to council and to the public the nature and purpose of the annexation.
Yes, so briefly, it's, again, it's just going to be an extension of the already existing Lake Shore subdivision. That lands directly to the west or the east of it, I'm talking a little off the marker there. The existing boundary of the city of Decatur that touches the proposed annexation is about 2,197 feet. It basically follows Pickway Road quite a way south and then goes straight north. That area is also owned by the Dryers, so they wish to annex it, annex it into the city limits and for it to be zoned as a Decatur City R1, as is the existing Lake Shore subdivision. I don't have the fiscal plan proposed, there's a fiscal plan in front of me, and you recall how many additional lots it was going to provide?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay. And for the city's benefit, on to the west of the proposed plot is actually city-owned land itself that is not zoned or annexed into the city, and this land would now make that land contiguous with annexed property for the future if the city would want to do that.
I should also state that the nature of the public hearing allows for comments related to the fiscal plan that has been introduced. So at this time, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of the annexation of the Lake Shores Edition Phase 9? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in opposition of the annexation of Lake Shores Edition Phase 9? Okay. Seeing...
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion second to close the public hearing, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
I'll make a motion that we open the city council meeting, back up.
I'll second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
So the next step for council to consider in the annexation process would be the approval and the adoption of the fiscal plan that was introduced at last meeting and that has been available for public inspection in the clerk treasurer's office and was handed, and I think every council member had an opportunity to take a copy with them. So the first step would be to, if there's not any further discussion, would be to adopt and approve the fiscal plan as presented.
Seeing, seeing that we have several of my neighbors and Wiley's neighbors from Lake Shores, do you have any questions at this point? Didn't have concern in the public hearing, but I, I think you've all seen the drawings or at least a preliminary drawing of what's being proposed. So I'll be quiet now, Stephen Lit.
Yeah, I do have a question. We have an association that has covenants. Is the new addition going to follow those covenants along that we already have?
That has, that's what the homeowners association... That's the homeowners association. Yeah, that's... What, what we're doing is bringing that property into the city. That's what tonight's doing.
The likely answer to that, though, just with some media and stuff I do, is whoever they hire to develop it normally institutes covenants eventually, and then there's a transition period to an HOA. So they would hopefully work with your already existing HOA, basically say, after some time to help or will transition the covenants and every, all the power to the HOA.
Okay, so we won't know what that developer wants for that one, it could be anything?
So once, once approval is given by council to bring this county territory into the city limits, then any development on that property or within that territory would come before the city plan commission and the, the platted area would first get primary plat approval that is more of a general nature and description. And then that is also a public meeting and it's considered a public hearing. And any questions or concerns that you would have related more to the development and what kinds of construction might be... what kinds of, um, construction might be happening within that area would likely be, that would be a great place to address any questions or concerns. So, um, city plan commission. Okay?
What does an R1, what are the sections on R1, what does that mean?
It's a, it's a residential development, so single, single and, and, um, single family homes for sure, but also maybe, maybe like duplexes or, um, where's Kurt Whitty?
Single.
Yeah. There we go.
That doesn't mean the developer is planning on that. In fact, with directest conversations I've had with him, even since our last, um, HOA meeting, it was his plan, their plan is to continue to build out just as they have with single family homes, not anything different than that at this point. But again, if they were to want to change, that would have to go through the planning commission, which is a board separate from this council board.
Or if they would like to use, build any kind of construction or, or purpose that would be outside of an R1 zoned area, they would need to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is another public forum, it's another, um, the, the Board of Zoning Appeals is required to give public notice and identify the date, time, place, and give the public an opportunity to weigh in on what, what kind of zoning classifications applicants are requesting, so.
It's just interesting because the, some of the new properties are actually touching the association property, where there's sidewalks and like, so that's, I think, most of our concern, is that, you know, those people understand.
Well, it's, I, I think that the intention is to develop it as an extension of the neighborhood.
Certainly.
Alright.
What's your ordinance, or resolution?
So this is, the, the first resolution would be for the approval and adoption of the fiscal plan, um, related to Lake Shore's addition Phase 9 annexation. And the resolution references the fact that, um, it's the annexation of 24.219 acres that is described in the attached legal description prepared by Brett Miller, um, through Miller Land Surveying, that was attached to the petition, and also includes a copy of the map that was provided along with the petition for annexation. And the resolution...
Twelve.
Twelve. Twenty-three, 2023-12.
Make a motion to, Resolution 2023-12 by short title only.
Second. Motion to second, all favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution number 2023-12, a resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which sets forth the policy of the city in regard to the Lake Shore's addition Phase 9 annexation.
Make a motion to pass, uh, order, um...
Resolution.
To pass Resolution 2023-12.
Second. Motion to second, all favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Alright, so...
Next at 13.
Alright, so the, um, once the fiscal plan has been approved, um, and there's, if there's any more discussion related to the annexation itself, um, it would be appropriate to introduce ordinance number 2023 dash, I'm sorry, Phyllis.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. You just, you guys just said that, I'm sorry.
So I do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, Will.
Make a motion to introduce Resolution 2023-13 by short title only.
No, this, I'm sorry, this is the annexation ordinance.
Oh, ordinance, okay.
Yes, so this is actually the ordinance that would approve bringing in...
Is that the right number then?
The 24.219 acres into the city limits.
Okay, we're on nine, huh?
Nine.
Okay.
Okay.
2023-9.
And that's an ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Correct. And so this, I, this ordinance identifies the fact that all of the statutory requirements have been, um, met, that the petition for annexation was properly made, that the survey and legal description represent that, um, the land is contiguous to existing city boundaries by at least 39% statutorily, it is far less than that, um, that the petition was made by 100% of the property owners, that the fiscal plan is approved, that a public hearing was given public notice and held, um, and then also includes a copy of the legal description and the map that was attached with the petition, so.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2023-9 on its first reading by short title only.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to second, all favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Alright. Ordinance number 2023-1, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which annexes certain territory to the city of Decatur, Indiana, commonly known as the Lake Shore's addition Phase 9 annexation.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-9 on its first reading.
I'll second.
Motion to second, roll call vote?
Craig Kuschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sird?
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2023-9 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion to second, all favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-9, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which annexes certain territory to the city of Decatur, Indiana, commonly known as the Lake Shore's addition Phase 9 annexation.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-9 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion to second, roll call vote?
Craig Kuschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2023-9 for its third reading that we will then bring to council on June 20th.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Did I find that yet?
Yeah.
Did you have, oh, we wait on the ordinance till we get it finalized, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. You know, Tori, that's a really good question. Resolution, I meant to, to a degree, carry a bit more formality. They can be codified, or they can be, um, made of record or, um, recorded. Resolutions can as well, but they require just a little bit less. Resolutions pass on one reading, ordinance, ordinances take three. So it's just a little bit more thought involved, um, anytime we have, um, something that we want codified, that would go in an ordinance. If it is a resolution, it is an explanation of the, the thought process and, and what's going on, and then what action is being taken by council. And it's a, it's a way to, to formalize that, that action beyond just being a part of council minutes. So there's, they both represent, um, action being taken by a legislative body.
And many times we read something on two readings, and then we will table it to the next meeting, just gives the public one more chance to give us their opinion on why we should or shouldn't do something before we make it a final decision. So in this instance, the neighbors had some concern or questions about how this all works, so we want to make sure they understand that. And we understand it.
The fiscal plan was a resolution, and then that gets represented and is part of the ordinance approving the annexation of the property.
Okay, department heads, you got, Jeremy? Kevin?
Yeah, we've got the, uh, Martin Martin repay this Thursday and Friday from Pennsy Depot, including the bar department, so they're gonna do half of it, and I don't know which half, we don't have the answer from them, but they'll do half of it Thursday, the other half Sunday.
I think they were playing on the Pennsy Depot.
That's kind of gauzy, just waiting for...
Okay.
But there won't be any public bargaining, uh, Thursday or Friday.
Okay. Okay. Tony? Jamie?
Yeah, so like, um, what we talked about earlier, we launched the Kikianga project today, and what that is, is we're raising $50,000 towards the dog park out there, um, docking the fishing pond, and then the Coad softball diamond as well. And with that, if we raise that $50,000, the Indiana Housing Community Development Authority will match that with a $50,000 grant. So anybody who does donate their money does pay the bills. Um, and we do have a fundraiser next Saturday that's gonna go towards that, the Dog Park Parade, and so that's gonna start at the Riverside Center and taking the trail, uh, River Greenway Trail to Second Street, and that will end on Main Street's downtown theater day, which Second Street will already be closed down, and there'll be parks there, there's over 50 vendors that are signed up for that event, um, there's food, and there's a lot of activities going on, so it'll be a really fun day. Um, also this week, Thursday, we have another youth musician who will be performing at the concert, uh, Jaylena Hill, and then Friday is the sculpture tour unveiling event, and Saturday is the Wildflowers concert, so busy couple of weeks.
Sounds like summer. No, it's great, and, uh, kudos to the, the kids that played last week at intermission of the concert, they, uh, they rock it, they really did. They were great, it was fun, everyone enjoyed it, it was really cool, so.
Great.
Again, I appreciate this whole group and everyone, you know, we're doing, trying to do more things and making it fun for the kids. Um, that's, that's what I want, that's what these guys have been helping with, and we're seeing more and more of it. So, uh, again, another, another singer, I think it's a singer this week, just her by herself, right, but looking forward to it.
How many you got lined up, Jamie?
So we have the whole month of June, and then I'm waiting on two more video tryouts to come through, and we do have another one in July, so nine, eight or nine lined up?
Good. They were well received last week.
Yeah, they sure were, they sure were. Good, okay. Bill?
I'm good.
Who's that pretty face?
All right, Parker's good.
All right, thanks Mitch. Um, anything from council?
This Thursday night's the Sweetwater All-Stars from 6 to 9, so look forward to that, it'd be a great show. Like I said, Connor Bright, Wildflowers is Saturday, so pretty busy weekend.
Good. Anything from public?
Um, so I don't know, this might be a Jeremy question too, but, um, a lot of people in this room are familiar with the intersection of Faggot and Jackson, um, being a problem traffic-wise. Um, I know I've seen a couple accidents there over the last year or two myself, I've seen several people below the stop sign going north or south on Second Street as well. Tori, she just got her license, um, I've been trying to teach her to be careful about intersections, and unfortunately she fell victim to it Friday night. Um, she was going east on Jackson towards First Street, and a gentleman was coming north on Second Street. He claimed he came to a stop, um, and didn't see her because of the sun, and that's possibly 11:15 in the evening, um, but he ended up T-boning her, um, in the passenger door. Get the daylight out of her, but she's okay. Um, so we just kind of want to ask if, you know, the, the neighbors that were there that live, uh, I think above Mr. Planners, they were kind enough, they heard the accident, they came down and checked on her, and they were talking with us, my husband and I, about how they see a lot of things happen there as well. Um, I just feel like there needs to be something done better with that intersection than that stop sign. I know sometimes if I'm going north on Faggot Street, um, the last parking spot there in front of Mr. Planners, I feel like that, you know, if there's the right height vehicle there, it could possibly impede the view of the stop sign a little bit. Um, I know that First and Jackson used to be a problem, and now there's, you know, the flags and the extra sign underneath that says, you know, the cross traffic doesn't stop, I don't know if we need to get some sort of flashing lights on them or what, um, but I just feel like that intersection is such a problem still. Um, you know, even the best driver, you can take off guard with something, because like I said, I personally seen people run the stop sign both ways, north and south on Faggot Street, over time.
Jeremy, what options do we have, like flashing lights or flags, or what, what you? Okay. I have had a couple other people mention that to me recently about that intersection. Okay.
Appreciate that, just, you know, looking at it, see what we can do. Um, and, you know, and I think that's also a, a pretty common intersection for a lot of students as well, um, and, you know, of course, adults going to work. Um, you know, I know when she had her permit and I was riding with her, so many times we get to that stop sign, that intersection, um, and it just seemed like, you know, there's a lot of people too that kind of forget how to do a four-way stop as well. Um, I know that's, you know, not always something that you guys can control, but, you know, if there's something we can just do to make it a little bit safer somehow. Um, I know the last accident I saw there, there was somebody up in the yard, I pout there and took out one of the, um, culture statues there too, so.
I personally think it would be a good idea if during the school year, um, during the mornings and the afternoons in school, get that or have like an officer there, just like, hey, watch yourself when you're there, you know, be more cautious, careful, um, as like also just in case, that there's an accident there. I've had several other students pull up in front of me there, I'm not even sure, um, so if somebody could just like sit there and be like a support for it to other people to just be more careful.
Alright, well, thank you guys for bringing that to our attention.
I do have one more thing. I want to announce that the life skills class for, um, mainly this year of any schools around, um, that has been something motion, the first class is June 19th, and it will be, uh, June 26th, uh, July 10th, July 17th, and July 24th. They're all at 11:00 AM at the Verka Center, um, so there's a different teacher for each class, the first class, um, not first class, one of the classes, we have five private coming in to teach public CPR and emergency first aid. Another one, we have an officer coming in to teach, um, basic tips for like, uh, freshly graduated high schoolers going into college, if you're living alone, especially for the girls, you know, uh, it can be very dangerous if they're moving to a big city like Chicago or something. And then we have another teacher coming in to teach, um, like changing tires in your car, if you get a flat and you have a spare, you need to know how to, you know, buy it. We have a banker coming in to, um, teach more about like loans, right, and, um, writing checks because of, people don't know how to write checks, um, and there'll be a little more on like grants and fast loans, stuff like that, so.
Yeah. Those kids, the kids love getting their credit card at school, you get a free t-shirt usually.
So, um, if anybody would like to force their kids to go to that, I would appreciate it, because this is a trial run, I'm hoping it will help some people. You can only go over to the register, they have a paper with a client sheet, you can just write their names and numbers on it, um, and I will add them to a group chat on BurtMe, that is what we'll be using to meditate, um, and I'll be recording the classes to send them out in case somebody can't attend, but they still want the information. And if you can't get to the register, you can also, um, message me on Instagram, Belmont Suckerell underscore photography, uh, just message me, and I can give you the details, and I can get you... and I can get your name and phone number for, um, communication services.
Okay, so June nineteenth, June twenty-sixth, what was?
July tenth, July seventeenth, and July twenty-fourth. All at eleven AM, which is a Monday for each of them, and it's at the Riverhead Center, and I don't think it'll take much longer than like a...
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else from the public?
Motion to pay the claims?
Second.
Motion second to pay the claims, on paper?
Aye.
Hold at the same time.
Fellas, one more chance. Keep talking into it.
Uh, concerns about the roundabout ideas you're finally putting in. Earlier, somebody said they're closing First Street. How is Fire, EMS, and stuff in a detour around that for one? They got the street closed, you know, you're, how long is this going to be closed down for? And next question is, why are we even doing it?
Well, this is about a, what, seven years, I think it's been going?
I think it was approved, like indoc approved in two thousand sixteen, so...
I was not hearing about it, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. Um, the original project was approved because it was one of the highest crash test sites in Adams County at that intersection. Um, and I think, I don't think that First Street... First Street?
He's talking about if there's an event going on and you close First Street.
Oh, that block, okay, okay. So, that one's separate and distinct from the roundabout, okay. That one's pedestrian traffic, plain and simple. It's a liability concern to have that many people on Madison Street right there. You've got, um, oftentimes youth events over in that First Street parking lot, and, um, you've got people on the streets all over there, so that one is. And that one's approved, those events applications are approved by all of the department heads, including Fire, so that they're very aware that that particular little block is closed off, so they've got alternate routes in mind.
And then, uh, you know, I've talked to the gas station owner, uh, he said there's been very few accidents right there.
We were going, uh, the city relied on, um, you know, National Highway Transportation Safety Administration records, um, when that, when that project was looked at.
I can tell you in talking to the bus, the bus drivers, they will not go through that, they hate that intersection. Um, a lot of high school kids are scared of that intersection. Um, people don't know if you're turning on Adams, you're turning on Winchester. Uh, it's just not a safe, uh, again, I hate, you know, if we're around, people get scared of the roundabout. Um, where she's talking about at Jackson Street, that would be a perfect place for a roundabout, if it fit. I'm just telling you right now, it keeps traffic rolling, it does. And if there's a wreck, it's not a high school kid getting T-boned, it's somebody getting bumped at fifteen miles an hour. But traffic actually flows the roundabouts way better than stop signs. So, um, I don't think it would fit there, there's just, there's too much infrastructure right there. But that would really, I mean, when kids went out of school, it would just be a nice, slow flow.
I think the main concern that we had talked about was not the roundabout's completion. During the process of the roundabout having the detours, EMS, all safety personnel, that's like a main artery now, straight down Second against any part of the town. If you detour, you're having, you're gonna have to detour somewhere else. First Street was my first thought, but then you have all these events going on. So, during the construction, when you shut First Street down, what's the next fastest route to get to Belmont from the hospital? You know, that was our concern was there, was if you're shutting down Second Street and you're seconding up First Street, and there's construction going on, detouring all the way up to, you know, the middle of town, that takes a lot of time out of responding call. That was what the main concern was during the construction process. What's the detour gonna look like?
When there's an event going on?
My first thought was, was First Street's gonna be your main, your main artery once that construction starts to get to that side of town. But if anything, I understand that pedestrian traffic is more important, but safety personnel getting through is more important as well. So, like, how is that gonna work?
I agree, and I think there will be a lot of people involved, and all of our safety officials will be involved in that, in that planning for the... Um, indocs, I already looked at some, uh, different detours for when it closes. What, how long, do you remember, Jeremy, what they thought it was gonna be closed down for?
Uh, it's a matter of ninety days, so you're probably four or five months. Because they need to be a total closure, what they do. Actually, I already have detours pretty well set, I don't have it with me right now. They've established the main detours, but we will have to work on our local stuff when that time comes. But, sir, obviously understand during events, those events are approved by each event, and we will just keep in mind whenever it's time for construction that we won't have that option of closing First Street. Right now, we do, it's on the streets. When that time comes, we'll just know that they won't maintain traffic.
Appreciate your concern.
That's all, this is more or less, hey, let's address this, make sure somebody else is caught on to this too.
Right, no, we appreciate it, definitely.
Yeah, I live a block away from there, not even blocks, and I've been here a year and a half and have a T-one accident. And, you know, this goes in seriously considered filling my house and getting out of Decatur.
Sorry, feel that way?
You know, who's gonna, who's gonna buy my house? Is it gonna depreciate my property value at that time? Because nobody else wants to live there because it's got a traffic circle?
Well, I could tell you that the city of Carmel has a hundred and twenty-six the last time new, and their houses sell pretty well in Carmel. I don't think a circle stops you from selling a house.
I, uh, I drive a truck and be forced around these roundabouts, here, there, everywhere. And I've seen more accidents in the roundabouts than if it had been straight open. You know, I've driven through more roundabouts in one week than most of you guys go through in a year. So, I haven't looked at that part of it.
I've driven through plenty of them.
You know, I, I drive semi, like I said, and that's right, around three roundabouts, I get, I was going to get fuel, come back out, get on the highway. You know, I've always gotta hit my brakes because that is in front of me.
Right.
And, uh, we're just gonna do with truck traffic down on Winchester.
There's not supposed to be any, there's not supposed to be any truck traffic.
There's twenty-five, thirty trucks a day.
And we're working on it, we just got new signage up, and you're gonna see a change.
And are they gonna build these roundabouts big enough to where it stops these trucks?
Nope. The ladder truck from the Fire Department will go around this roundabout.
You know, and we need some more police traffic down that street also.
We need, we need the correct signage up, and we're, we just finished that up, and that'll, that'll change soon.
Because like I said, I'm not even a block away, before Red Street, and cars are doing forty, fifty mile an hour down through there.
Yeah, well, they won't with a circle there.
Well, the circle, we're gonna stop them, because soon they come out of that circle, they're flying down Winchester. So, it's a great place. It's pretty bad.
I've lived out there my whole life, so I get it.
We got the trail right there, we got the Boys and Girls Club right there. And the speeding is just crazy.
Okay, I appreciate it, appreciate it, sir.
And, uh, another thing about this, uh, can you guys put up, you know, two hundred fifty thousand is what I heard for fifty feet of money? I don't participate in that stuff down here, so where's my money going?
Can you tell me how many tax dollars is going into that?
I didn't hear that, I just heard it.
You're right. No one's talked about any tax dollars going into that.
We're using money for that, let's build something more for the kids and, and, you know, return.
I think we talked a lot about building stuff for the kids today, we've talked about how much we want to do for the kids, and there's never been a conversation about any tax dollars going into that.
I didn't say anything about tax dollars.
You said your money.
I'm asking.
You asked, we said, where's your money gonna go?
So, why not put this money that you guys have into the roads so we don't have to drive around like we're in trunk nuts and all these manhole covers without hearing the cars about it?
We have, we have an app out there called See Quick Fix. You can go to that app, you can report those, and our people will work on them.
I don't know if my camera will get that much film, I don't know. Just about every manhole cover in town.
Again, thank you for your concern. Do you have another one?
No.
Thank you. Okay, can we have you guys' names for the record? That's proud.
I don't know.
Anything else from the public?
If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.